I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first order of business tonight is to approve our prior amendments on our March 8th meeting. Do you hear a motion?
Thank you.
Motion to approve it?
For a second.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Andy.
We're at a new water plant's treated five hundred forty-seven thousand seven hundred forty gallons. Since March 8th, our average daily usage is down to thirty-nine thousand one hundred twenty-four fifteen. And ironed twenty continuing education units at the Alliance of Indiana Spring Conference. Under wastewater, been performing daily checks, the lift stations, the ponds, and the SSO during rain events. Our sewer plants closed and we're not discharging. Weekly sewer samples are complete, we had six sewer connection inspections. The low bids for the work out there were Living Waters on the chlorine room, they were thirty-three hundred. Rick Pfeifer was all of everything left on the building, chlorine contact tank, that's the electrical, the doors, the window, the iron filter, the tank for it, and then the sidewalk. Forty-five twenty-five. And then JD's landscaping was a low bid on the dirt work, the grading, seeding, and putting the rip rack on back across the bridge there. It's not all the way to the water, it's about the top three feet of it. Across there, it's ten thousand eight hundred dollars. And I think all of you got the email from Amy Miller. The only thing that's wrong with her, she had Living Waters five hundred dollars higher than where they actually are. She had like thirty-eight hundred, I talked to Larry, it's thirty-three. Which is gonna bring us in just a little over ten thousand dollars under budget. It's all said and done. Like I said, the chlorine room, it's been repaired and completed. And then Living Waters is gonna be here on the thirty-first, next Thursday, to do the startup and test the system. Everything should be, should be good on that. And my crew has finished the brick work and he's gonna be doing cleanup tomorrow. And then the doors, the windows, they've been installed. The rest of the work on the building is gonna be finished probably here over the next two weeks. And since chlorine system's done, and we've met that benchmark, but we have until June thirtieth to have everything totally done with that extension that Amy got. So, that'll be completely done, closed out. And then the streets, the twenty-five hundred's been serviced. And then I have a bid to replace that front bumper, which is attached. Eight sixty-five eighteen. And under, uh, building, that door inspections, one final inspection out here, one electrical inspection, one building inquiry, and one zoning inquiry. And then I got a locate ticket. Do some directional boring on Central Street. And I called them today, but I told them to do what I'm gonna do, use the same guidelines that we used for Endeavor. And then I told them they've gotta submit their plans and apply for a permit. And then once they will, I'll determine what course of action we need to take. But, I didn't quite understand them because there's three poles there. Basically, they wanna go to run three telephone poles. And they had to get something. Wanna do, so they thought they would just bore it. But, we have utilities right where they ought to be, and so does Endeavor now. Because it was one of the routes they, Endeavor used, we used up some space on there, over on Central. It's basically from Kaufman and Central, nearby JD's house, two-year-old house. So, three telephone poles heading north on the east side of Central. So, their permit person, they've got someone that handles that, supposed to be getting back in touch with me. I'm gonna, you know. Yeah, I mean, just same thing we did. If there is room, there's gonna need to be five feet away from us, you know, they're gonna have to have insurance, they're gonna have to do. You know, basically, I'm gonna give them the same list we gave Endeavor and say, here's what you need to do. Get all this and come back to me. So, I'm gonna get all that, share it with them, see what we think. And I still say the easiest thing for them is gonna be is to go on the poles. I don't know why they're not, they've already got stuff on the poles. I don't, I didn't quite understand why they're going through this, this process. We'll see what happens.
Hopefully, see what you use, not your contractor.
No, it's some other company. It's some other company. I talked to the guy from the board company today. So, so, I haven't looked, any other questions?
I have a question. There was an article in the Star, I don't know, last week or week before or something. And, of course, they're talking about lead in the water and, and all this and that. And I know you run all the tests, but can you tell us how much?
You ever read your consumer confidence report, send that over here? We don't, we, here's the thing, for lead in our water, town of Atlanta has no, no, no lead pipe. All our pipe is concrete and plastic. So, if somebody fails, it's gonna be in your home because of your own plumbing.
Okay, I was just wondering, since they've been, they've been, you know, talking about it. They had a map of the whole United States and this state and this state and...
Yeah, we don't have, we don't have an issue with lead naturally occurring in our aquifer.
Okay.
But I've got copies of last year's report that we sent out, we'll be sending another one out in July.
Okay.
That shows...
I was just curious.
Yeah, it shows everything that we run. But, really, if someone has, like I said, if somebody has a problem here in town, they're actually gonna make us change our monitoring format. That was one of the things we touched base on in conference. Which, I don't know, it's kinda funny because they want us, they want us to target houses between nineteen eighty-three and nineteen eighty-eight. They've changed the system to a three-tiered system. We're gonna be a tier three because it really doesn't apply to us, and then we can use any house. We basically have twenty different locations that we sample from. But for our system and the fact that it's put in nineteen sixty-eight, if there's a problem, it's gonna be in someone, it's gonna, the problem's gonna be in someone's house with their plumbing. And that's the unfortunate part, is if they, they kinda punish some towns depending on what they do, you could have bad plumbing, and then we could have to treat the entire system. And what they used to treat the whole system will end up clogging up your shower heads and everything, because basically, they want you to coat the inside of all the pipes. Luckily, we've never, in all of our lead and copper tests, we're even on reduced monitoring. We sample every three years, next year's our sample year. We've spent...
Does a water softener take Amy that long out, if, if so?
No, not really. I mean, there's, it's, there are filters that'll do it. I mean, there are, you can't get filtered, just a regular, regular water softener. It might reduce it a little bit. Specific filters that they made for, for actually removing lead. So, I mean, it can be taken out. A basic water softener, really. It's even, it would be, I would be surprised, like I said, I mean, I've tested older homes before that were four-eight-three when they had lead and solder, but, I mean, that joint is so miniscule. Most of the people are having a problem with lead in the waters either naturally occurring in the aquifer or they did use to use lead for water lines, so where the entire water line is lead. But then what really gets the lead out depends on the pH of your water. And it's, it's, it's the water reacting with the lead. It's, you know, removing some of that. So, there's really a lot of factors to get you to that point, to get that issue to be, you know, high enough to do it. I, I don't really see all the tests we've done from all the different multiple buildings and houses here. I don't really think there's ever gonna be anybody in town here that's gonna have a problem with, with the plumbing in their house. I don't know, I've never seen, I'm not saying somebody doesn't have one, it was probably just in a joint. I've never seen anyone at the, at the house, at a house here that had lead, actual lead pipe. And most of that stuff is so, so old.
Thank you.
Looking at this repair estimate, I assume that's on the vehicle?
Yes, on the truck.
We've got a, already got four, probably a thousand...
Thousand dollars.
Thousand dollars, isn't it?
He's been trying to find one for less, he even tried to find a used one. There's three different ones for the truck, and he's trying to, that so far, this is about the lowest one he came up with. He hasn't been able to find a takeoff, that's what he was looking for.
Do you hear a motion that we approve this?
My motion to approve it?
For a second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We're on the third enforcement, obviously Murray's not here this evening.
He's on duty.
Was he able, do you know Andy, to give notice to the folks in Central on that barn, that drive?
I don't know if he did or not, we talked about it, I was, actually went over it today. I didn't talk to him through anybody, I went over his name and looked at it, so...
Does that barn belong to Phil or to the guy next to him?
It belongs to walkers.
That's good.
Yeah, that, a lot of people are, Phil's property line's not far off of his house. I mean, it's like eight feet away, so there's that stuff from the school. Most, that, that orange stuff from whatever the bleachers or whatever that was, that is, is walkers. So, I was gonna do something on the unsafe building ordinance. I mean, that's why we look at it today. I mean, it's, I guess they wanna try to argue if they can, but it's really, under our ordinances, it's really beyond repair. I mean, it, it needs to be demolished, just because of the percentage of decay and the collapse and it's... Cause I, I had somebody tell me the reason he got that, that bleacher stuff, is because they were gonna use that to fix the building. But it's, it's beyond it, it really is.
Well, he had a full thing.
Yeah, it is.
It's gonna boost the roof.
No, it is, that's why I've kinda peeked in there where it's all collapsed. I mean, it's, the walls, stuff, it's, it's rotted. So, I'm just gonna send a letter under the, as I said, under the unsafe building ordinance. Or I need to do something about it.
So, was there a letter sent, or we don't know?
No, I, I don't, well, I don't know about Murray, I'll speak to myself. That's why I went and looked at it today. I'm sending one to the building department.
I just remember, you know, Frank was up here complaining last year.
Well, Murray, Murray has cited him all the way into court. I mean, the guy's been fine and still isn't doing it. I mean, Murray's gone to court on him, I mean, you'd have to ask him, but I know he's written five or six tickets.
Yeah, on the, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, he has. I mean, and he keeps paying the tickets, and he went to court, and the judge gave him this extension and told him, you know, the next time I see you, you know, basically, said you're gonna get it. So, he didn't do anything, so I would imagine he's gonna go through the three tickets again and cite him back into court. And he'll be back in front of the judge, but I, I know he's given him several tickets. Like I said, he's been to court, Murray's gone to court.
But is that on both properties or just one?
No, that's on, uh, layoffs.
So now we have to do the same thing to the other company where the barn is?
Well, let the, I'm, I don't know how Murray's gonna go with it. From my standpoint, I'm gonna issue the building under the unsafe building code. And we'll have to go through the process, and if he does nothing, the council will have to decide if they wanna have all of his property. My bet is they're gonna do nothing. I mean, they had a water, they had a water leak for three years, and the water bill was five hundred dollars a month. I mean, so, I'm telling you now, you guys should probably think about it, because I doubt they're gonna, I doubt they're gonna do anything.
The modular across the street from Princess, is that in town or is it out of town?
Nope.
Where Anderson's lived at?
Nope.
And she was younger and she called him.
Yes.
Kinda, yeah.
What are they got over there?
We've got one.
Chickens, chickens, a goat, and rabbits, two goats.
Well, they are...
She asked me about it.
Rises, it's a maid or something.
I don't know.
It's, uh...
I thought, I thought that was in, cause worse was out.
Mm-mm. They both are, I mean, it used to be part of that property, her dad had it. It's, uh, so... Obviously, we'll see what's on the map, well, the thing is, let's see that map real quick, that white thing.
It's green on the map?
Ah, well, since that ain't it, they can have all the farm animals they want. It's ag.
Yep.
It's ag if it's outside city limits, so...
Well, maybe just set on that.
Maybe able to truly do something about the trash in your yard.
Anything else, Andy?
No, it's all in.
On the same budget, I guess, what about the King Carson down the railroad?
No, I don't know where Aaron's at on that, cause he's not here tonight, she was talking to him about it.
I, I spoke with him.
Okay.
In discussion with him on that, he said that probably would not be a bad idea if the town was gonna pursue that to, to have a title search done, make sure that there is no other liens or lien holders or anything on that, because everyone would have a lien or interest on that, has to be notified. He said it were a couple hundred bucks, just to have them, we don't need the title insurance or any of that. We'd just be looking for, you know, we could hire them just to do a title search and get that information. And he said he has some companies that he could recommend if the, the town would like. He said she did about two hundred bucks, somewhere around there, to have title search done. And, uh, once that was done and we knew who all was a lien holder or had interest into that property, the letter he gave Andy, he said, is a template and write out the information on there, and then you would enter in the people that have a lien or interest into that, and send each one of them a copy of that, and then that would start the process. And I think he said they had sixty days to respond to it. And if not, then we could move forward and demo it, and we don't have to, we don't have to have a court order or anything. Once they have been notified and we set a hearing and they don't show up to the hearing.
Alright.
So, those letters would need to be sent out certified mail.
Here's my question.
But he's recommending the title search first, just so we cover our bases and we don't miss anybody.
Well, here's my question, I'll do what you want. The letter he sent me is not a template, I will show it to you. It is the letter that your church had on the interim road for Arcadia, from that house. So...
He said that letter has the language in it that's required by law to notify them, and we can just change the information, and that's the one...
So, you want me to do that, or is he gonna do it, I guess is my question?
Well, we can do it, or, I mean, Robin can, you know, give it to Robin, she can type in the information and send it out certified mail or whatever. I mean, it's just a name and address or whatever to the...
I don't know who to send it to, though. I don't like it.
Well, that's, we gotta do the title search, and the title search will give you names and addresses.
Somebody else will do the title search, but I'll do the letter.
Yeah, we just need to send that letter to anybody that would show up on there, and that's, you know, something that we need to vote on or decide whether we wanted to have that done and move forward with that house. But, that's the procedure we need to, to take in order to do that and cover ourselves, is to have a title search done.
And one other thing, reminder of, while we're talking about Walker's house, I just thought about this, Murray's not gonna be able to do anything there, because it's outside of town limits. I can do it, because I can do the building, because it's in our building jurisdiction. But as far as all the trash and stuff in your yard, that's gonna be the county. It's outside city limits.
That'll be a project, and then you can go ahead and serve them, you know...
I can do it on the building.
The unsafe.
Yeah.
Brother, and then we'll get the county involved on the rest of it.
Thank you.
Do you want to, do you want to have a title search done on his property down here on there?
Yeah, I would, uh, seek a motion to, uh...
I make a motion to do a title search.
I'd second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Like I said, I don't know, you know, I'm gonna look into, call the company herself, or Aaron said he, you know, there were several right down around the courthouse square, he said that's where almost all their offices are, and he can, you know, recommend one or whatever, or several, contact.
The quicker we get it done, the quicker we get it done. It's a festival, yeah.
See that going, or repaired, it's beyond repaired.
Beyond.
Alright, Robin, do you have anything?
No.
We'll move on to old business, Jim Frazell's here from Engineering Prep.
Guess I wasn't as late as I thought I was.
Getting up here was terrible tonight.
Was it?
Yeah, thirty-eight's closed coming in from Pendleton. It was a thrill. Um, as you all know, we've gotten quotes, you know, thanks to these guys who've been working pretty hard. Total of the quotes, I think Jim Soper sent this up here, is twenty thousand one ninety. No one started yet, have they?
Well, did you, I sent him the last one, did you get the one from JD's landscaping? Or is that what, the one you're including there?
Yes, the ten, ten-eight, that was included.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, let me check.
So, procedurally, you know, everybody had to verify that they were doing this with Davis Bacon Wage. I'd suggest we do a PO that references those things, so that we can get this, they haven't started, have they? You know, when everybody looks down to the left, do I tell you the truth? Are they done yet? Closed. Oh, okay. Okay, you slide on. Anyway, let's get the POs done, so we can get Amy Miller happy, and we don't have to have a grandpa. So, we'll, we'll get these done real quick, get them to these guys, get them signed. If they're up here, I'll let Soper or myself know, and we'll just meet them here and get them signed and done with it.
Yeah, our Larry Hayes from Living Waters is gonna be here next Thursday to do, to do the startup.
Okay.
If you want someone to come. It's, I don't know, you know, a little bit of way is kinda lucky, because the way they had that, he changed the whole setup in there. He said it wouldn't have worked, the way they put it in there. We would've drawn that vacuum line. The way they had the water and the injectors, he changed the whole, he simplified it, there's a lot less pipe in there.
Well, that was good, because when we looked at it, there was a lot of pipe.
Yeah, he cleaned it, he cleaned it up a lot, and put unions on it, we can take it apart and made, came up with a little solution where we can blow one hundred percent of it out. We'll take the injectors out, he set it up with a valve and a valve, we'll take the injectors completely out. And we got a little tail piece that you can, two of them you can screw on and blow everything out to the tank. And then we can even set it up where we can do the upline coming into the room too. So, it's pretty, it's pretty nice.
He's doing the ironing too, is he?
No, Rick Pfeifer is, it was in his bid, because Larry was wanting to get it, it was very busy, and that filter was on back orders. But, luckily, I picked it up yesterday.
Okay, good.
So, it's, it's out there. He's gonna be pregnant for it next week, they finished the brick today. So, that's done.
Well, what I'm asking for is authorization to do these agreements, so we can get them signed, even though they're almost done.
No landscaping, none of the rock, none of the surface restoration stuff's gonna happen.
We keep that?
Need authorization to prepare these agreements, so that we get them signed by all the contractors.
Do you hear a motion that we...
I make a motion to give them authorization.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Be nice to get this done.
Sure will.
Amen.
Sure will. Right around the corner, getting close.
Yeah, and the good thing is, we don't have to discharge, we're low.
Gonna get, get it in time for the requirement by I.D.M. to have it online by April first, and we ain't gonna need it.
Yeah.
God love it. I'd rather have it... I was gonna ask you that, I don't know if it's something, are we gonna send them something, you know, because they've never modified our permit or given us limits that we have to go by? I didn't, has it?
Yes, we need to ask them to open up the permit.
Yeah.
So, we'll do that.
Do something, I don't mean, I don't know, I'm assuming it's gonna be like everybody else, but they've never given us anything in writing.
We didn't, we didn't get our, okay. I'll follow up on that.
Any other old business this evening? Okay, we'll move on to new business. We have an amendment to our comp policy.
Or discussion.
Discussion.
Okay, just let me, let me practice. Prior to having the comp policy written, we always calculated it weekly. And then when we got the written comp policy from Arcadia, everyone had implemented it. And then Andy pointed out that it is calculated daily. So, I thought that we needed to amend it, but I'm not gonna die on that mountain.
And I don't care, makes no difference to me.
Currently, the comp time is figured per day. So, for example, if you work a ten-hour day, you're paid for, you know, three overtime hours. You got two, two hours of overtime, and time and a half would actually be three hours. So, you're compensated three hours for that overtime. By the week, if you do it, you have to work forty hours plus in order to receive comp time. If that makes sense.
And how do we do it now?
Now, you could do a ten-hour day on Monday, a ten-hour day on Tuesday, a ten-hour day on Wednesday. That would be thirty hours of actual hours that you work. But you would have two, four, six hours of overtime, but you would be compensated nine hours. So, basically, you would have thirty-nine hours for that thirty hours of work.
And that's how we do it now?
Now that it's written.
That was the ordinance you guys passed?
Yeah.
And that, and I'll explain that...
Rather than by the week, where it's...
The reason, the reason being that that's written in that manner for Arcadia, which is the ordinance that we adopted, is because, for example, if the guy goes out and he works an eight-hour day, and then it starts snowing a couple hours later, and he's out all night long plowing again, and he's out for twelve, sixteen, eighteen hours straight, and then he's gotta come back in and still make his rounds. And, and for us, we've got a half a day's lab that is required to be done. So, we're out all night long, we go home, get an hour or two of sleep, and we come back in and work another, at least the half day, before we can even take the rest of the day off. So, you know, it's, you know, that was the reason it was written in that manner for us, because we have to come back in the next day and spend at least a half, another half a day. So, you know, it was only right that I, you know, that was one of the things that I requested, you know, was asked down there too, was, you know, we were compensated for it, I mean, it's, that's a long, hard day. And there was, there was one particular time where we were out twenty-four hours straight, you know, nonstop with that, working the eight hours, then come out and plow, and then we had to go right into the labs the very next day. We plowed all night long, right up until it was time to start labs, so we didn't even get any sleep that whole night. the labs the very next day, we plowed all night long right up until it was time to start labs, so we didn't even get any sleep that whole night.
Do we foresee that here though? I mean...
Well, you know, it's not like, I mean, it's not like something you take advantage of, like Fred's giving the example of working ten hours a day, you gotta justify the overtime down there, you know, I mean, we can't just say we wanna work ten-hour days so we can get that extra nine hours at the end of the week, so it's, it's emergency situation is the only time we were allowed to get overtime. And, you know, I mean, it's either, I, you know, I don't really, I really don't care, I mean, myself, but that's the reason it was set up for us down there. And it, it happens quite frequently down there when we get snow especially. It's mainly the snow removal where it comes in, where we're up, working all day long, a regular eight-hour day, and then boom, we get snow and we're up all night long to boot and then have to still come in the next day and you know, and if anything else comes up, we still have to stay there and finish out, you know, whatever that, you know, situation may arise after the lab, so sometimes you can work, you know, pretty long hours right back to back.
And also, you, if you work ten hours a day, uh, three days a week, and then you take a, a day or two sick ti- sick time off, you know. If you figure it out on a forty-hour basis, you know, that would, you wouldn't be qualified for those ten hours for time and a half.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, it's...
You're not getting compensated.
Yeah.
On a daily basis instead of a weekly basis.
Yeah, if you were to work all that overtime Monday and Tuesday and you were, you actually became sick, then you didn't get your forty in because you were actually sick, so you lose out on any comp time that you would have if you had been able to continue your forty-hour week. You know, it's, it's kind of a, it's kind of one of them deals where it's either or, I mean...
Well, for Arcadia, that's one thing, but we don't have the, the, I mean, I don't think we've got the...
When it snows, we do.
I, I just could see it like, see it based on a forty-hour week instead of a daily basis, but that's my own personal opinion, that's my two cents.
I thought maybe the, since we hired Mark, is it his name?
Kirk.
Kirk.
Kirk. The, the overtime would, you know, kind of diminish. And I don't know whether it has or not, I don't, you know, I haven't been keeping track.
It has, didn't we give them to you last week?
Yeah, yeah, we had, they, they gave us comp, comp time sheets from last time.
It has, I imagine they'll get a little bit when they start mowing, especially now that we're maintaining the ball diamonds too, but we'll stay on top of it. And the policy doesn't let it go over twenty hours.
I'm gonna start getting my Kirk sheets by the way. Just so I can watch it.
Okay.
I know where mine's at, but I don't know.
So we're, we're currently at a, at a twenty-hour limit, is that correct?
Yeah, a quarter.
Yeah, yeah, twenty hours, quarter.
Per quarter.
Nothing? There's any? And I got like... He didn't have any, and I think I got nine hours, I don't really know where I'm at. Mine was down there.
So we leave it as is? Or do we change it?
I, I never, I really, seriously, I'm not gonna make a
I can see it both ways.
I mean, it's a pain to do it daily, but we can adapt to that, and I had never really heard those arguments in favor of it before, so.
Andy, do you remember on Christmas Eve?
When the water went out?
He was in a hole.
So was he.
And how were those people like, and he went home because he had his forty hours in, so it's the only thing.
It really doesn't matter to me, I just...
Oh, we can...
I don't care.
So would it still remain twenty hours per quarter?
Yeah, either way, well, you know, that way, that, they try to get all...
I think that's our, you know, that's our, uh, safety net, so to speak, with that in there, that we don't run up a huge, huge bill. That's the only concern I have is, you know, the budget standpoint. We get into a situation where we have to...
You know, I worked forty hours a week, anything over forty hours was time and a half for thirty-two years at Ford. And, and one of the problems with, with that is, and I know firsthand, is if, if you do, uh, uh, say you work Monday, you work, uh, uh, twelve hours, so you got, uh, six hours extra pay, time and a half. But what happened is Friday of that week, for whatever reason, you got sent home because there was no work available. So you go home, well, you weren't able to get your forty hours in, so those twelve hours, those four, four extra hours that you worked Monday didn't count for overtime. And so consequently, you had to come in on Saturday, which nobody likes to work on weekends, you know, unless you have to, and it was straight time. And, uh, of course, all that was to benefit the company, you know, of course. Uh, and I can see how that could from time to time apply here, you know, uh, on a forty-hour, uh, basis. The guy works overtime through the week and then he gets sick or something happens and, you know, and so it kind of knocks him out, the overtime they had through the week on a daily basis. And I hate to see that because I don't think nobody wants to work twelve, fourteen hours a day. And like you said, it's basically on the, uh, need-to-do basis here, you know, I mean, uh, it's something you just have to, you know, you got a water leak out there and you gotta stay on the job till it's done, you know what I mean? And, uh...
Ideally, that it's ideally, they should be trying to take off then later that week if possible.
The only thing I, the only thing I encourage is, uh, is, you know, where I sit is, you know, I think we should discourage overtime as much as possible. But I don't think we have that problem here so much.
And, you know, it's, it's basically supposed to be an emergency situation, that's the way we are down there, you know, and it's usually snow or water main break in the summer, and, you know, being, being employee that does and has to go out and do this stuff, you know, I feel, I just feel that, you know, the guy gets up and he's out in the middle of the night where everybody else is at home cozy in bed and he's out all night long running and plowing, cleaning the snow and getting roads cleared while, you know, in the middle of the night and stuff, you know, he should be compensated for his efforts of doing that in the middle of the night and is that, you know, it's part of my job and I, you know, I wanna call twenty-four, seven, and there's numerous times I like to still be in at home instead of being out in that truck all night long pushing snow, you know, so it's I feel like you ain't being compensated if it's on a forty-hour week and then you have to take off or something, you know, then you just, I don't know, that's just how, you know, from being directly involved with, kinda how I see it.
Do you have it right now where it's eight o', anything over eight hours is overtime? I think we should leave it right now.
Do I hear a motion that we retain the current policy?
Make a motion to retain the current policy.
You hear a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We'll leave that be. We do have an adjust.
It was under his house.
Under his house.
Probably down there, yeah. It had, a while back. It was under his house.
Leave that?
Yeah.
Any other new business on the floor tonight? Don't everybody look so lively? Siren hadn't burned out yet, have they?
You know what, we were in Myers this morning when the Siren ran off and it was out, and I sort of expected the school manager to come on the system and say, now folks, this is a practice, and if, if it's real, you would go to this area, it didn't say nothing about it.
We had our practice at school today, so... Alright, any other new business?
I do have, uh, just some information if anybody is interested. On April twentieth, and I can, uh, remind everybody again next month, at the Mended Hearts meeting, Mitch Russell is going to, uh, give, he's gonna be our speaker, and he's going to talk about what to do in case you're somewhere where there's an active shooter. So, and I've heard him give this talk before, and he, it's very, very good, he gives you a lot of information. And if anybody is interested, it's at noon on Wednesday, February, or April twentieth, at the old Colo building next door to the hospital. But if anybody's interested, it really, it really does give you good information. And in this day and age, you can't be prepared enough.
Sad but true.
Is there a fire territory meeting?
Tomorrow.
No, township meeting is supposed to be tomorrow. Three P.M. at the trustee's office.
If you can attend.
Three o'clock at the fire station in Arcadia.
Pardon me?
Three o'clock at the fire station in Arcadia.
Okay.
Trustee's office? Fire station?
Yeah, they put it on the sign.
Oh.
They moved it to the fire, they moved it to the fire station, at least it's what the sign says.
Cool, I hadn't looked at the website or anything lately.
Yeah, they moved it to five oh eight.
Five oh eight?
The address.
Oh, okay.
They changed the address, they put the fire, they moved it to on their little banner or their electronic sign that says it's at the fire station.
Cool.
I don't know about the website though.
We also have a meeting scheduled here tomorrow evening at six o'clock with Steve Rock, our rate consultant, to discuss a possible grant for a water, uh, water project. We'll be here tomorrow evening at six to share some information.
I know we got a lot going on, but someday I'd like to see new sidewalks.
Yeah.
There has to be a grant out there for sidewalks someplace, there's time?
No, I mean, it could be downtown, I mean, you can get that, if they're still doing, they took away from it, they brought it back, we got a revitalization thing that's like in your business district, like Arcadia got.
Yeah, there's a safe routes to school thing, which, that you guys can't, so it's, it's pretty hard.
We can get it, once we put this pathway into the school, everyone walk down there, we can get sidewalks in town because we're gonna make them walk all the way to school.
Now you're thinking.
I voted for that, I want sidewalks in town. Thinking, they ain't safe out on the highway.
The town was paying sixty percent and the homeowner was forty.
I had hopes of setting up a fund for that this year with some of our carryover money and stuff like that, but, um, the fire territory situation came up, so now we're afraid to spend any of them.
Till that's resolved. We know where we're at exactly. Alright, we need to discuss anything about that, uh, the tree and the birdhouse location? You brought that up, thank you. Do you have any mine in front of you? I looked at, I didn't print it out.
No.
That's our tree dedication? Andy, you, you pretty much know where the location?
I don't know, I mean, I can dig holes with tractor, that's about it. They got an auger?
That's what it was about, they just wanna know if we know.
I think they can furnish a, sounds like they can furnish an auger, doesn't it?
So what are we telling them?
That'd be the cleanest way.
I don't know, it probably ain't gonna work. So I don't know, auger, I won't throw them a lot over here, but you know, the brick that's over there.
They wanted you to, if possible, you to auger it out.
I have an auger, you get a tractor from me.
I'll tell you, we don't have an auger.
Okay, I'll put the little bucket, I'll put, I'll put the little bucket on it, I mean, that'd be a job.
Which looks not fall around anyway, you all just rip that thing tight.
I was gonna tell them, because the birdhouse is one of the bigger trees, you know, one of those pomegranate trees or one of those down there, and the other tree up here.
Be fine with me.
I mean, if they wanna try to auger it, go for it.
So I'm just telling them we don't have an auger.
We don't?
We have a back.
Can't they use a shovel?
It's gonna be hard digging over there.
I don't know how large some tree is, I don't know, it's a little sapling or...
I think it's pretty big, I'm thinking one of the same, I think it's a pretty decent sized tree, I mean, I think it's a six-foot tree or something. Somewhere I saw something about the size of, or told the caliper on one of the earlier things, it's like a two or three-inch caliber tree, I thought.
Have a root ball, good-sized root ball on it?
Yeah, we're talking about a, yeah, yeah, or I don't know what kind of size auger they're talking about using, I mean, it's a twenty-four inch or tree spade or whatever. Whatever, I'll be able to, I don't care.
Read something. I said I'm sure we can get our council president to do that, but I'll double check. They'll have, they'll have it prepared what, what to read.
I can do that.
What are you gonna read?
I don't know.
Whatever's prepared.
We'll find out.
And when is that again?
Yeah, what's the date on the hat?
Oh, let me get that email.
I'm sorry, Rob.
So that's, oh, like, you know...
Two days, two days to the day.
We, we said it in our meeting that day.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
On Saturday, I don't know.
Yeah.
It was on Saturday.
Towards the end of April.
I remember, I...
April thirtieth at eleven A.M.
Four a.m.
No, at eleven. Yeah, April thirtieth.
Eleven?
For thirty-fourth. You can read the local sports page if you want.
There you go. Saturday. Alright, any other business to discuss? Alright, do I hear a motion that we sign the claims and we're in the meeting?
I make a motion, will you sign the claim?
You okay?
Yeah, we're just sounding like we're...
We can go home and sleep now. It's this weather.